All right, it's 7:00 PM and we're going to call to order a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the amendments to the adequate public facilities ordinance in Chapter 98 On-Site and Subdivision Plans Regulations Concerning Open Space Ordinance 2019-12. And could I get a show of hands of persons who are going to speak to this tonight? So I can gauge out how much time we need. Got one, two. All right, we'll go with about three minutes apiece if that's okay. And you can go ahead and line up and we'll listen to your comments at this time.
I'll be your timekeeper.
Thanks. And Holly, can you make sure the microphone's on?
Just turn it off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Brian Delong. I live on the corner of Sunset and Hill. And we were here in May, I guess, when the planning department first turned down this AFPO, the open space for specifically for the apartments that...
Okay. I'm sorry. Could we go ahead and get the street address?
It's 512 Hill Street.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Corner of Sunset and Hill.
Okay.
Specifically, I'd like to know that if this passes, what is going to be the impact on a proposed apartment complex that is proposed down at Hill Street? Because as of May and through a couple other meetings, it did not meet the required open space. And is there... How's it going to affect it?
Okay. So you're... I understand the question. It says more of... The public hearing is for us to listen to you, as opposed to us telling you all kinds of things. But in regard to that, as it is proposed right now, basically what it does is includes all of the downtown zone properties.
Right.
As a...
My concern is before it did not meet the requirements. And when we get done tonight, are we going to find out that, okay, now we have 114-unit apartment complexes going in or that could be approved because all of a sudden magically it's meeting the open space requirements?
Yeah. Well, you know, obviously I can't tell you what the...
So the ordinance as introduced would not... Would allow downtown zone properties to more easily qualify under the APFO, but probably not enough for the particular development that you're talking about, would be my guess. However, the Planning Commission made recommendations of changes to the ordinance from what was introduced that would exempt all... That if passed, would exempt all properties in the downtown zone from any open space measurement in terms of the APFO.
Okay.
Which would include the Prospect Place development.
So if approved this evening?
Depends on what gets approved. If it's approved as introduced, probably not.
Okay.
If it gets approved with the Planning Commission changes, then yes, there'd be a complete exemption for all downtown zone properties.
Okay. Just for the record, there's many of the neighbors in here. And personally speaking, it's not going to do our street, it's not going to do our properties, it's not going to do our neighborhood any benefit, except for increased traffic where the speed limit is posted at 50. Cars currently come by at 35, 40 miles an hour, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, everybody in the evening, because it's a quick bypass to go through downtown. I'm sorry, but the police are not enforcing it. They're not enforcing stop signs. I live on the corner. People speed up to come around the corner. It is a safety issue. And...
Sir, if I could just say, this is actually not just for this particular property. This is for all the properties that we're looking at. And I know from speaking with some of the council members, there's still serious concern to apply open space to residential property.
Okay. That's fair.
So I just let them discuss it?
Okay.
Talk it out?
Just voicing my concern.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ron Thompson, Van Mar. I stand before you tonight to support the Planning Commission's recommendation to exempt the downtown zone from Chapter 25-5G for open space. As I testified at the Planning Commission, the town spent a great deal of money to produce a downtown vision plan, which identified specific open space design for the downtown. This ordinance, if passed, would prohibit redevelopment of properties within the downtown that have been targeted by the town for wanting redevelopment and would work against the implementation of the downtown vision plan. Therefore, again, I would recommend to support the Planning Commission's recommendation to exempt the downtown zone from the open space ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to 2019-12? All right. With that in mind, we'll call this public hearing closed and adjourned. We need a real call on that. Okay. All right. And let's see, the next public hearing will start at 7:15 and the next public hearing is one concerning ordinance 2019-13. That'll be at 7:15 PM. Thank you. All right, we're going to call to order the second public hearing of the evening. That's a public hearing amendments to Chapter 112 titled zoning relating to the properties in the downtown zone and development of residential units in the downtown zone. Ordinance 2019-13. How many people would like to speak on this ordinance? Got one. People must like Chick-fil-A. And two. Okay. If you'll go ahead and come up to the podium, once again, we'll try to stick to a three-minute timeframe.
Hi. My name is Kristin Ellis. I live at 504 Hill Street. Honestly, I want to speak, but I don't know what I have to say, because as I look at all of the exemptions to the exemptions, to the special amendments, to all the... I don't know how we're really supposed to be pulling that apart and understanding. It's like, kind of needs some special help with that. But it does seem like there are contradictions. If one of the... One of the main ideas, especially with the ordinance we were just talking about, number 12, is to encourage development in the downtown zone and to therefore exempt downtown zone from having adequate public facilities. And in this next ordinance, 13, there are then exceptions to the need to have the retail on the main floor and residential on the upper level and that residential's purely residential, which would be such as the apartment complexes that some of us are here to share our concern about. So I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but I'm... A whole lot of confusion about a lot of it, but I'm very concerned. I don't know that... Maybe I missed out on some of these announcements and a lot of us were here back when we understood it to be kind of public forum. And it seemed like there were a lot of other meetings that happened between then and now that I wasn't aware of, or otherwise I think a lot of us would have been there. And again, maybe that was just me missing out on that. But it seems like a lot of exceptions are being made, what it feels like, is a lot of exceptions are being made for specific development to occur that a lot of us are incredibly concerned about.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, Ron Thompson, Van Mar. I stand before you tonight urging the council to vote no and reject this ordinance and the Planning Commission recommendation to repeal the text amendment ordinance 2016-23 exempting first-floor commercial from the first story on the ground level. There is still an active concept site plan pending with the Planning Commission, and this ordinance would interfere in an active site plan process under Chapter 98. It ignores the investment that has been made to the state in working through a site plan process. And it would ignore... This ordinance would ignore that there is no commercial opportunity on this parcel. First of all, there is no street visibility from either Main Street or Prospect Road, so any businesses would be hidden from anybody driving by. And commercial businesses, small business, need street visibility to attract customers, not be hidden in some development. The staff report dated January 9, 2017, recognized all of this in their recommendation, supporting the elimination of a commercial requirement on the first floor. I believe that passage of this ordinance would essentially be a taking of the property, eliminating any development potential on this parcel within the downtown zone. Furthermore, passage of this ordinance would eliminate the proposed rails-to-trail connection from the downtown to the proposed CSX rails-to-trail connection west of Hill Street. And you've been spending a lot of time on trying to enact that, but you would have no connection. And that was about 1,800 feet of trail being proposed on this project. Again, I would urge the council to vote no, reject the ordinance, respect the site plan process, and allow that to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on that ordinance?
Once again, Brian Delong, 512 Hill Street. And I just listened to the gentleman speak, and as Christian would say, some of these things are so convoluted that... I mean, we've talked to his neighbors, we can't figure it out. Is he referring to the specific property, the Prospect Apartments?
Yep.
Yes?
I believe he was.
So, you know, if you get your way, you get your apartments, and then you get 1,800 feet of rails-to-trails. I'll take no apartments and no rails-to-trails any day over the development of 114 units that's going to put somewheres around 250 cars through our neighborhood again, once again. And this... If the statute says that there should be commercial, it should be commercial and it should not be changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg Galetti, 308 Hill Street. Sorry, I really didn't have an opportunity to read through this. As my neighbors pointed out, this is a very convoluted document, and I think it's quite unfair to the neighborhood and the members of this community to have to try to navigate through this kind of information. But I would say that property that we're talking about specifically on Prospect, it's on Hill and Prospect. So I don't understand the argument that they wouldn't have frontage or viewing from Prospect. So I reject that argument that commercial properties wouldn't be seen by people traveling on Prospect. In addition, if those properties have the ingress and egress off Prospect, plenty of people are going to see businesses on that area. In addition, it seemed to me that we've been arguing that Hill Street, being what it is, is not the proper ingress and egress for a development of that size. In what I can read here, it doesn't say that thou shalt not use Hill Street. It says something to the effect that it's undesirable. Well, it's more than undesirable. It's dangerous. And if you pass this ordinance, I would like to see something in there that explicitly prohibits the people that are going to be in those apartments from going up and down Hill Street. I don't know if it's possible to do that. If it is, I implore you to do that. Okay? The other thing, again, I don't know the ordinance as well enough, but it seems to me if you look at the Hill Street community, again, we're 110-year-old homes, there's probably 75 to 100 homes in that neighborhood. It doesn't seem reasonable to build or construct twice as many properties, in essence doubling the density of that community in this one opportunity for these apartments. I would say if you can create something where there would be a percentage that could not exceed a certain percentage of the existing properties, that may be reasonable. But to come across and even entertain a development that's going to double the size of the community is ridiculous. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Just real quick. Greg, I believe it's more than a recommendation. The staff had serious concerns with the safety of traffic on Hill Street and back up in that neighborhood, so they definitely do not want any points of egress going through there.
Yeah.
This ordinance is about commercial on the first level. It's not about this particular... Although it does impact this project.
Right.
It's for all downtown.
Understood. Understood.
So a lot of people are speaking too specific, saying if this is approved, this is for... It will impact it. But again, the staff has given a recommendation against egress on your part of the community.
Right.
I'm glad you all are here to show your concern. That's good. Thank you. But it is confusing. They've been discussing it planning. We're confused. There's three different versions, but that's why we're having a public hearing. There is no meetings that you don't know about. This is it. And there's been Planning Commission meetings, so...
So let me just understand something. So when you deliberate on these today, are you deliberating on each individual one and then coming to a conclusion?
I can't tell how it's going to unfold, but they're going to be discussing all these options.
Okay.
You're going to hear it in a public hearing today.
Okay. So you may cherry pick certain provisions from certain versions of this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's been, you know, I share the complexity... The sympathy for the complexity of these issues. I spent all of today running through scenarios on different properties around town to see how this would impact it if certain things were done in 2019-12 and 2019-13. And, you know, and it's not an easy thing to wrap our arms around. And I think even some of the Planning Commission members that are out there would say that it was very tough to work their way through this. It's actually got public math in it, you know, so it gets complicated.
Yeah, I was looking for some differential equations, but, you know...
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, and it's even after going through, you know, basically for the last couple of months trying to wrap my arms around it, I, like I said, I share this empathy. And I've gotten to the point where even a simple question gets complicated.
Right.
Because there's going to be a lot of discussion tonight about this up here at the council table. But we do understand the dilemma of the Hill Street crowd that has shown up numerous times with great concerns. The mayor is right. This is about the entire downtown zone.
Right.
You know, as opposed to one individual property.
Sure, sure. So all I would say is when you go through this, if you're going to look at the various combinations and cherry pick things that seem to make appropriate sense, just try to do it in a bounding manner such that you won't have these extremes, where you're going to have somebody come in with a 110-unit development in the middle of a historic district, and lo and behold, it meets all of the ordinance. I mean, something seems at odds with that.
Greg, and part of the issue is, it's going to be discussed in the public. If they would have discussed this all before the public and then given you a finished document, you could probably clearly understand, then they'd be breaking the law. We have to do this in public.
Okay.
That's why you're seeing the confusion, because they're going to hammer it out here right now, tonight.
Okay.
In front of your eyes. And also, if this is passed, Tom, correct me, there's 30 days. It's 30 days before it becomes...
I'm sorry, what?
Is it 30 days before this would take effect, where there's a chance to be challenged? Is that not ordinances?
No, the ordinances, if passed, go to the mayor for either approval or veto.
And I... How many days to...
Well, the ordinance would take effect if passed 20 days after the ultimate approval of the ordinance, whether it be by means of mayor or signature, or an override of the mayor's veto.
Okay. So there's time afterwards to...
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for him. Yeah.
Quickly, I apologize. I feel kind of like my neighbor. I didn't intend to speak, and I'm not sure exactly what I'll say, other than Matt Burnett, 101 Sunset Avenue. I find it a little disingenuous that we keep talking about the whole town. I agree that these apply to the whole town. I understand that. But the only people I see here that have vested interests are the gentleman and the young lady over here who have a vested interest in this. I don't see other business owners. I don't see anybody else in the town that's out here with an opinion on this. So please at least understand when you talk about these things and you say, "It's not about that, it's about that." And these things, the quality of life that we have in Mount Airy is something that... I've lived all over the world, and I've never found this place. This is a miracle to me. This passes and instantly, myself and our neighbors, the flight of people out of that area. I can move anytime I want. Most of us can. We're there because we love Mount Airy, we love this spot. But you take away that quality of life, you impact it that dramatically, you destroy that whole area. You know, questions I asked in the past about what has happened the other times that this companies come in and put this high-density stuff into a community? What kind of follow-up has been done about what happened to those communities? What was the aftermath in those areas? And there's nothing. There's no information on that. There's no follow-up. These people that have done this before, who know the business of this, provide no detail about that, because when they're done building it, they're gone. And it's me and my neighbors' job to deal with the aftermath and the complexity of it. We were all here last year. There was a scheduled meeting that was going to take place over at the Firehouse location, and that was then canceled. There was no follow-up to what would come next. So these conversations about how everything has been clear and easy to understand for us, no, we are very passionate. And the fact that so much of this is coming in the last week is a surprise, that it is this far, that we're at this point, is... It adds a very, very negative pallor to the whole thing. It starts to seem like this has moved very quietly for a very long time, and all of a sudden, it's moving fast. And so I just... I implore you to consider the much bigger aspect. Everybody would love to see that area developed. Nobody likes the ice where there is nothing good for our community about it sitting there the way it is. But the right thing has to be the right thing, and if we keep bending and bending and changing what makes Mount Airy, Mount Airy, in order to fit something in there, we've missed the point. So, thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this ordinance? All right. With that, we'll call this hearing closed, and we'll jump right into our next hearing. And this is a resolution to transfer town property consisting of approximately .18 acres located along South Main Street at or near the corner of Ridgeway Drive, and it's Resolution 2020-1. And you'll better know it as the Chick-fil-A Resolution. So how many people are here to talk about the potential surrender of property for Chick-fil-A for sale? So hold up your hands, please. All right. We will, once again, keep... Try to keep it to three minutes, and you can step up to the podium and speak your mind. Yeah. Thanks.
For the record, Jay Brooks Leahy, Delaney Leahy, Curtison Brophy. I represent Chick-fil-A, and we're here tonight to address this proposed ordinance. With me is Joe Caligera from the Traffic Group, Andrew Stein, and Dan Hanley from Bowler. So if people have questions, they're here as well to answer any questions. Obviously, we're in support of this. This is really fairly simple. Chick-fil-A is very much interested in building a restaurant at this location. There is an opportunity for Chick-fil-A to purchase some additional property that the town owns that is really of no particular use to the town. It's a great benefit to Chick-fil-A. And what I would say is, without this property, we have a 3,296-square-foot restaurant with 24 parking spaces and 26 stacking spaces. With this extra property, we have a slightly larger restaurant, 4,001 square feet. We have 37 parking spaces, not 24, 32 stacking spaces, not 26. So it's a big improvement to the plan. I think there's been some tweaks to it, which we're okay with. I think there's been a request to make it slightly smaller, and Barney, I believe you spoke with Andrew Stein of Bowler. We're okay with that, with that tweak. So basically, that's it. Happy to answer questions if there are any. Or our team is happy to answer.
How soon might we see Chick-fil-A in this community?
Andrew, we're moving pretty fast, aren't we?
Does he need to come forward?
You can tell him, and he can tell.
Come on forward.
All the fourth graders are going to ask when we...
This is not my three minutes. He gets another three. Right?
Andrew Stein, Bowler Engineering, address 901 Delaney Valley Road in Towson, Maryland. I mean, right now, we've submitted the concept site plan. That's under review. We received some comments from the town. We're waiting on some comments from the county as part of their review, as well as a storm to concept review. So Chick-fil-A plans to move forward with this as expediently as possible, working through the, you know, the appropriate plan approvals related to the site plan, concept site plan, going to Planning Commission, the technical documents. So I can't speak to, you know, the exactly when, but I mean, that process is going to take us, you know, roughly in the eight to 12-month range, then, you know, Chick-fil-A would move to constructing, you know, constructing and, you know, hopefully, you'll get through all those approvals, constructing and opening the facility.
Okay.
So spring?
Spring. Yes.
Two years. Two years.
Yeah, first quarter 2020.
If y'all want to take a seat, if we need to pull you back up, we will.
Thank you.
Are there citizens who would like to make a comment? Okay, we have one.
Gary Frye, 4021 Twin Arch. I hear a lot of, "We're pro-business in this town." But I also want to make sure we're talking about adding 60 vehicles into an area that's got a traffic problem already. There's nothing in this agreement that says they're going to do any capital improvements. So they get this land for a dollar, and there's no guarantees that we get... The town gets anything out of it, other than a crowded business in a very dangerous intersection. So my personal opinion is this should have been a proffer deal, where a written agreement for capital improvements was in place in exchange for the land. So I just wanted to put that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It'll thoroughly go through planning. It hasn't even been through planning yet, so they'll have to do all the site layouts.
All right. Anyone else to speak about? Elizabeth, you made all the trouble to come to this meeting. You better get up there and say something nice. It's the first council meeting she's been to since I got on the council.
Really like Chick-fil-A, and I would like a Chick-fil-A. Want a number one with no pickles and a Dr. Pepper's. Thank you.
All right.
Just like you.
Amazing. All right. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and call the public hearing for the Chick-fil-A Resolution closed, and we'll give it a couple minutes. And how about we start our council meeting at 45, 7:45? Thank you. Guys, ready? Anybody excited out there? Okay. We're going to call to order the town council meeting, February 3, 2020, of Mount Airy, Maryland. Okay? We're going to start with the Pledge of Legions. Please join me.
The Pledge of Legions do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, Councilwoman Reed, I believe there's a presentation. Sure.
Good evening. I stand in front of you tonight as well as my colleague, Councilwoman Pam Reed, because many women before us fought for women to be enfranchised into the political process. It took 17, 72 years for this message to become a reality. And in August of 1920, Congress ratified the Constitution by adding the 19th Amendment. The amendment guaranteed and protected the woman's constitutional right to vote. On January 28th, Mayor Rockenberg read a proclamation declaring 2020, as Councilwoman is proudly displaying it, is the Year of the Woman 2020 at an event that was held right here in our town hall. This officially kicked off a year-long celebration honoring the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Our celebrations this year will remember the women that came before us as well as the women who currently enter a wonderful town of Mount Airy who make our town a better place. Councilwoman Pam Reed will now let you know what these celebrations will be so you can mark your calendars for these fun and upcoming events not to be missed.
So Year of the Woman is an opportunity for us to engage and empower women within the community. So we have formed a planning committee which consists of local leadership, volunteers from the community, locally owned, women-owned businesses to, to help us kick off this entire year celebration. So as Councilwoman Washabaugh mentioned, we had a dedication ceremony here last Tuesday where Mayor Pat read the proclamation. We have a dress for success fashion show on Sunday, October 4th at the Links at Shaladon. We hope to, pending approval of course, close Main Street for about an hour on August 16th, line Main Street with all of Mount Airy's great women and take a historic aerial photo. There is some talk that we're going to try and take this countywide and actually have all the municipalities in the county take an aerial photo on that day at the exact same time. So we're working on that. We're going to do an educational series on Facebook. Part of the process is not forgetting the struggle that sort of got us here to this centennial anniversary. And we're also going to dig deep into the community and find historic women who have impacted our past, present and future and spotlight them as well throughout the year. So we're really excited. We have a lot more coming. So like us on Facebook, keep watching. We'll keep you posted. Yay.
All right, next on the agenda is speakers and we have noticed that our county councilman, Steve McKay, is in the room and he'd like to say a few words to us. It's always good to see him here.
Thank you very much. I always feel like I should be apologizing for not being seen more often. I do enjoy coming out to your meetings though, just because, I mean, you guys pack the house. We don't get this at, at the county level. Well, yeah, yeah, they pack the parking lots. Well, thank you for giving me a few moments. I just thought I'd mention a few things that's going on at the Frederick County level. So I'm Steve McKay. I'm county council member for Frederick County for District 2, which is the southeast quadrant of Frederick County, including Mount Airy. Couple of big things coming up at the county level. First of all, I, I thought I'd mentioned binding arbitration. So our professional firefighters union at the county for Frederick County, they took an issue to a charter amendment in 2018. It was passed resoundingly 70%, which did two big things. First of all, it expanded the scope of what can be negotiated in collective bargaining to include working conditions. But most importantly, it brought about a requirement for binding arbitration. Basically, binding arbitration means that the county executive, the administration is negotiating a contract with the firefighters union. They get this close but not to a point of agreement. Then they make their best and final offer and then they hand the decision over to a neutral arbitrator who will then make a binding decision upon the county. So our job at the council was to implement an ordinance to provide for what was called for in the charter amendment. We're working through that process right now. It was just introduced last week officially. We're having a public hearing on February 9th at 7:00 PM. So if you're interested in this, come out and tell us all about it. It's a very complicated process. And we're already getting a lot of heat because we're apparently not doing it good enough. So welcome to my world. Yeah, but you do. We have another interesting topic of discussion that's coming up. Our councilmen, council members, Hagan and Fitzwater are bringing forward a climate emergency resolution for Frederick County that stipulates a variety of concerns about the state of our climate and what the county can do about it. And part of it will be setting up a working group to come up with recommendations for implementation by the county. So that's going to be an interesting discussion. I know a lot of people have a lot of, well, there are a lot of people that share various points of view about the climate, man's role in climate change, all those things. And you're going to hear all of it spoken about with respect to this resolution. So stay tuned for that.
Steve, when is that meeting going to be?
That's going to be scheduled for workshop. I believe that could be on the workshop schedule for February 9th. So February 9th, I think was a workshop and then we have a public hearing at 7 o'clock, which I believe is going to be for the binding arbitration. So I'll double check that and if I'm incorrect, I'll send a note.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess the last thing I'll talk about, we have, we have the thing called a school construction mitigation fee. This was a, an ordinance implemented back in 2012, which it's appropriate because you're talking about your adequate public facilities ordinance tonight. So at the county level, there was a desire by members of our development community that if they failed the school test back in 2012, what would happen to be one of two things? Either they would stop building or they would wait or they would pay to provide the school capacity that was required. Or they were given then a third choice, which was to keep building and write incremental checks for the cost of capacity needed by each of those additional houses. And personally, I always thought that was a horrible public policy because it allowed large developments to keep going forward into crowded school districts. All right. And we've been living with that. Those agreements were locked into long-term contracts. There have been a number of efforts to try to keep the fees up to pace with the rising cost of school construction. It largely has failed and we're trying to do some catch up right now. So I'm bringing forward a, an ordinance to do that. And it's going to be, it's going to be very contentious because each time this has been tried, it's been very contentious. But I think we have the votes this time. So that's all I have.
One question here, Steve. It's been brought to my attention that due to the redistricting that Cal, no, excuse me, I'm living with Cal County, Frederick County Public Schools have done recently that some of the schools in the Mount Airy area might be at or close to capacity. Could you have Frederick County Public Schools send us the, the capacity numbers for the upcoming school year starting in the fall of 2020?
Sure, sure. I don't think that's the case.
It's just at close to capacity, particularly on the elementary school level, I heard.
Right now, there's 475 students at Twin Ridge Elementary. And next year, that will change. It'll be 600, maybe districted.
Yeah.
So with that said, we'll be pretty much at capacity. So that's a concern for us because if we do have any new development, then that may mean portables. So which, you know, we, we don't want to see.
I completely understand your concern. I mean, I, so it's old history now, but 2012, 2014, I was good after they're arguing about each and every one of those development proposals that we're bringing. All you had to do was look ahead towards what it was going to do to the schools and we're seeing it now. And I know and specifically with respect to a Twin Ridge, they needed to shift students out of Green Valley because Green Valley last year was at 110% of capacity. And so they shifted the boundary on the eastern side there. So.
Now, when you, when you are going to be, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but when you are voting on that?
No, not at all.
I mean, when do you expect to be voting on that?
We won't be voting. This is purely board of ed.
No, no, no. I mean, your ordinance that you're.
Oh, okay. I've got to get it onto the workshop calendar. I'm hoping to get it onto the calendar in February. Our calendar is kind of tight, particularly for something that's going to require a, a good chunk of time. I had originally hoped that we would get it on the workshop calendar for February 25th. Unfortunately, it looks, unfortunately, it looks like I need to travel for work that day. So I'm hoping to squeeze it in the week before, but hopefully our council president isn't listening since she hasn't authorized that yet. But no, I want to get it on the council, on the calendar as soon as possible. I want to get going on it.
Perfect. Would you be so kind to just send us an email when that gets on the calendar? So if we'd like to, you know, participate in that, we could.
Well, and just so you know, so you know our process. So we start off with a workshop and that's basically our ability to talk with staff over an idea with legislative implications. You know, whether the staff's bringing it forward or council is bringing it forwards, we accept public comment on those topics. The next step is we have what's called a first reading, which is just the very formal introduction of a bill. It's usually just a few moments of, you know, introducing the bill. Then the next big step is the public hearing. That's what we call our second reader. And that's where, that's the, the primary opportunity for the public to come in to then help influence the, the legislation before we finally vote on it. But I do think it is important at the workshop level because the more people we hear from at the workshop level, the more we can, it can influence the drafting even before it's introduced.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Steve. It's good to see you. All right, next we made some time available for the members of the Growth Development Task Force to discuss the town survey. Would someone like to step up to the podium and discuss that?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Wendy and I am the chair of the Growth Task Survey. I just wanted to let you know that we started this survey into May of 2019. At this point, the survey has been printed and mailed by SK Printing, a local business right here in Mount Airy to just over 7,000 residents. As of this morning, over 730 of them have been returned, which is just about 10% in the first week. Yard signs and flyers have been ordered and they will be distributed once arrived and our plan is in place from our next meeting, which is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in this very room. Citizens that are here this evening, we do encourage you to take the time to fill it out. Return it in the prepaid envelope that is included in the survey and please make your voices heard. Council members, we urge you to discuss this with your commissions and remind people to fill them out and send them back in. And I would like to thank Katie and Gina for all of the help that you have provided us. Any questions?
Are the, the other members of that task force, will you hold your hands up so we can see you? Thanks. So, thanks, Bart. So.
I have one, one quick question. There were some recent mail thefts and I know we've traded emails back and forth. Gina, are we going to be posting something that anybody that thought their survey may have been impacted by the recent thefts? To please contact us and then if we do not see their surveys, we'll know they were in fact impacted. I think that's what we were coming up with. We had to do something. They're popping up more and more. Tomorrow.
Next is the approval of the council meeting minutes for January 20 of the town council meeting. For January, would anyone like to make a motion on those?
I'll make a motion.
Jason's made a motion to approve. Carl has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor is aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, next we're to the Mount Airy Police Chief Reitz, monthly report.
Good evening. It's Chief Reitz, the Mary Police Department. Did submit the Mary Police Department monthly report to the town council and staff for review part of this evening. During the month of January, we've handled 977 calls for service. As far as traffic enforcement during the month of January, we conducted 129 traffic stops. We issued 54 citations, 109 warnings, 30 safety equipment repair orders. We made one DUI arrest and four other traffic arrests for driving while suspended and other related charges. For criminal enforcement during the month of January, we made nine criminal apprehensions and took 68 investigative reports. Understand, last meeting, there were some questions regarding to what a part one offense is. And I took upon myself to put it in the monthly report describing what part one offense is in. But to enlighten everybody here, basically what a part one offense is, it's those crimes that's required to be reported to the FBI as part of the Uniform Crime Reporting Program or what they commonly refer to as the UCR. These offenses are what is considered serious crimes that occur regularity, regularly throughout the country. And they're most likely to be reported to the police departments. And the part one offenses are defined as criminal homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, larceny, theft, motor vehicle theft and arson. So to kind of recap, 2019, we handled 121 part one offenses in the town of Mount Airy. Most prevalent was larceny, which we handled 99 incidents of larceny. We handled 16 breaking and enterings and we handled three aggravated assaults and two motor vehicle thefts and one robbery. As far as the month of January is concerned, we handled four part one crimes and they were limited to two larceny thefts and two larceny shopliftings. As far as part two offenses, these are less serious in nature, but they're still required to be reported for UCR purposes. These crimes consider, are considered other assaults, forgery and counterfeiting, fraud, embezzlement, stolen property, vandalism, weapons violations, prostitution, commercial vates, sex offenses, drug abuse and so forth. We handled 14 part two crimes during the month and that consisted of four simple assaults, a CDS, a controlled dangerous substance incident, two frauds, a, one forgery and counterfeiting, one DUI, one offense against family and children, two sex offenses, one vandalism and one other, all other offense. Also, just a couple of significant events that we go over as far as the month. I believe the mayor already mentioned it. We did have an incident where several neighborhoods were in the Sterling Glen community, several residents of Sterling Glen community were victims of thefts from their mailboxes. We're in the process of that investigation. It's been turned over to our Criminal Investigation Division. We're asking if anybody of any residents have any type of surveillance footage or video that they might have received from a home surveillance system or a ring doorbell if they could contact our police department and speak with Detective Kelly. Also, there was a second degree assault where, which occurred on Route 27, the East Ridgeville Boulevard, where a motorist was assaulted by another motorist and then they took off down the highway. So if anybody has the information or might have witnessed that, we would ask that they reached out, reach out to contact the police department as well. Additionally, there was two incidents of overdoses involving opioids during the month. That's in the report. And also I did submit to the council, the Community Policing Program Annual Report that's submitted to the state of Maryland, Maryland Police Training Commission as far as our program in Mount Airy. If you recall, last year was our first year as a police department that we submitted ours and we were recognized by the Maryland Police Training Commission as being a, being a hallmark in that area and more of an example to go, to go by. So.
Congratulations.
Hopefully similar results again this year. So, but I also submitted that to the council for their review. And does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, you had mentioned Sterling Glen, also Summit Ridge.
Summit Ridge, yes, yes, that's correct.
Make sure Summit Ridge people hear that out there. And also a, a good comment was made during citizen comments about instead of just numbers, actually comparing percentages to we are doing better this month or worse this month or this quarter or semi-annually. And that is a question in the survey if they'd like to hear more from our chief, if they'd like to see some more stats. I know that you were looking at it because we don't have a statistician, a statistician on staff.
Correct.
And if you could actually do something along those lines, because when somebody hears we had 330 blanks, they have no reference for that. So are we up, down? Are we moving in the right direction? Do we have to take more action in a certain area? So hopefully you can give us an update on that and we'll get some feedback from the survey.
Certainly.
Chief, can you just speak briefly about the K-9 that, has it gone through any training? Is it?
Our, our K-9, we, matter of fact, went in service this past week and he's already made his first drug arrest. Our, our K9, we, we, matter of fact, went in service this past week and he's already made his first drug arrest.
I guess we'll keep him.
He's in good shape.
He's done better than you, councilman. No, I was supposed to look for drugs, but I will.
All right. Thank you, chief. All right. Uh, we're to Bruce Walls with the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company report. Welcome back.
For the month of, uh, January, rescue calls, 105 in Carroll, 40 in Frederick, two in Howard for a total of 147 rescue calls. Fires, we had 21 in Carroll, seven in Frederick, uh, one in Howard and three in Montgomery for a total of 32 fire calls, which resulted in 126 calls for service in Carroll, 47 in Frederick, three in Howard, three in Montgomery for 179 emergency responses. This Friday, the auxiliary will begin their Friday, uh, community dinners once a month and they'll be off and running. So please support the auxiliary because they support the fire company. And on the 16th, we'll be having as usual, our, uh, monthly big country breakfast. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now we're down to community concerns, citizen comments. Uh, is there anyone who would like to comment on anything outside of what our public hearings were about? And, uh, and things like that. Is there? Anyone got anything? All right. Well, then we'll move, uh, move on down. So we're into ordinances and resolutions. Uh, ordinance 2019 dash 12, that's the APFO open space. And this is up for adoption tonight. For my fellow council members and, and just so you all, uh, so the citizens know it, in our packages, we get everything stacked up. And, and for this ordinance, there were three renditions that were in the package. The first was the original one. Uh, the second one was written with the recommendations of the planning commission. And the, uh, third one is one that I asked the attorney to draft. They kind of met somewhere in the middle of those two. At that point, I think it might be, um, John, have you got a copy of the, uh, planning commission recommendation report?
I do. It's the one with the purple highlighted lines on it.
But do you have the, uh, this report?
Yes.
Could you mind going ahead and reading that?
Yeah. So this, this, uh, report was, uh, sent to, uh, mayor and town council on 12/20/2019. Planning commission, from the planning department, recommendations for the planning commission on 11/25/19 related to ordinance 2019 dash 12. Planning commission recommendations, town council on ordinance 2019 12. During our planning commission meeting, Scott Cerchio mentioned, uh, adding the extinguishment of the special exception 2016 23, the adoption of the ordinance and the adoption of the ordinance 2019 12 as written exempt.
John, are you sure you got dash 12s?
Yeah.
He's reading it.
Yeah.
All right.
Here's the copy we found, Tom.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It, it may not be correct.
Yeah, hold up.
All right. Uh, go ahead.
Okay. So going back to, uh, as written exempt with the complete. Okay. Let me start all over.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, planning commission member Scott Cerchio mentioned adding to, added the extinguishment, extinguishment of the special exception 2016 23 and the adoption, I forgot to put and there, and the adoption of ordinance 2019 12 as written, except with the complete, uh, exception of all parcels within the downtown zone for open space requirements. Bill Butts seconds the motion, planning commission open this recommendation, recommendation for discussion and public comment. After discussion and public comment, a vote was taken. Planning commission took a vote on ordinance 2019 dash 12. Three planning commission voted yes with the addition of the exclusion of the downtown zone from these requirements. Scott Cerchio, Bill Butts and Roxanne Hemphill. The remaining planning commission voters, members voted no. Leslie Dickinson, Lyndi Karamati and Judy Olger.
O'Leary.
O'Leary. Thank you. This created a tie vote, which, uh, was then decided by town, town council member liaison Pamela Reed with yes. That would be four yeses and three noes from the planning commission related to their rendition number two as it is in the packet with all the purple excluding, basically removing all open space requirements in the downtown zone.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Can I just say one thing, Larry?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that all the people that spoke tonight, I share your pain about the confusion. My eyes are crisscrossed after reading this 500 times. But are we all on board now that the one that he was just talking about that was voted by the planning commission, a vote of four to three is the one that has the purple? Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's following. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, uh, version one applies to all the downtown zone. Okay. Uh, including small properties down to point zero three acres. So all properties are included in the, in version number one, and that's the one that was introduced, um, prior. Okay. The second one is the one that was, um, based on the planning commission's recommendation. It eliminates the downtown zone entirely from APFO requirements. Okay. Version three is one I had drafted and, um, basically takes it down to properties. It exempts properties that are smaller than 15,000 square foot, which is roughly a third of an acre. So smaller properties would remain exempt from the APFO. However, properties that are bigger than 15,000 feet would, um, be able to reduce the amount of open space that is required if they add a commercial component to the, uh, to the property. So in other words, it can't be pure residential. They would have to, uh, start adding commercial and as they added commercial to the property, it would slowly reduce the amount of, uh, uh, of open space that would be required on that property. So that's, that's the difference between the three versions that we're looking at up here. And with that in mind, uh, what I'm going to try to do is, um, is make a motion to approve 2019 dash 12 with the following amendments that basically take it to the, uh, that apply a 15,000 square foot, uh, limitation on this. So if you want to pull the one that has a smaller writing on it. And I'm going to go page by page with the modifications. And we'll start on page three of eight. Two A. And two A will read only for developments located in the downtown zone with lots less than or equal to 15,000 square feet. The parks and open space requirement will be fully exempted. So again, that takes the, the smaller lots in town and exempts them. And then on page four, A becomes B, top line. And it now reads only for developments located in the downtown zone with lots greater than 15,000 square feet. In accordance with the requirements set forth in the code applicable thereto, a development project may be granted a waiver under the following subsection as follows. Okay. All this, I believe, is in the, um, uh, original. Okay. And that goes down to, and there's a formula in there that basically what it says is that, um, for every, um, certain amount of commercial that you add to it, we're able to drop back from the APFO requirement. And the standard APFO requirement is three acres for every hundred people that are added. Okay. So we're going to say if they add a commercial component, then we start reducing that number. Okay. That, that acreage that's required. That's to encourage commercial development in the downtown zone. Okay. All right. On page five of eight, it becomes, uh, let's see, generally gets moved and it, okay. The, a percentage of open space must be reserved as detailed in the section as generally based on housing density. Now we're on page six of eight. We have a number two now that says only for developments located in the downtown zone with lots less than or equal to 15,000 square feet. The parks and open space will be fully exempted. Okay. And then, um, then two becomes three and three reads developments with a residential component located in the downtown zone with lots greater than 15,000 square feet. In accordance with the requirements set forth in the code applicable thereto, shall provide open spaces follows. And then we go into the formulas again, that basically reduces the requirement for open space as they increase the commercial ratio. Okay. And I believe, I believe that's the last one. Okay. All right. So so my motion is to approve 2019 dash 12 with those amendments. And my question is, is there a second on that? All right. Seconded by councilwoman Reed and now we can go into discussion. So, uh, who's got something to say?
I guess I'll start. I think 2019 dash 12 as amended is, I believe, a good balance between what the planning commission recommended and what is, what the town needs for development of the downtown zone.
Councilwoman Washmore, you got anything?
Yes. Um, I'm in favor of this mended version. Um, I'm not in favor of exempting all the downtown zone, um, uh, parcels due to the fact that if, the reason why we have APFO is to make sure that we have infrastructure in place, that we're not going to be, you know, um, having our schools overburden, our streets overburden. And at this point, we don't have enough, um, sports facilities. We don't have enough parkland, um, for our residents. We're deficient in that. And I, I feel as though for us to say that they wouldn't have to, and this is for any downtown zone area that's greater than 15,000 square feet, it would be to the detriment of our residents. If you have more residents because you're not putting commercial on a lot of this property that is now zoned for commercial slash residential, then you're increasing the amount of people that will be in this town, which makes our infrastructure more of a deficit. And as we just heard from, um, our, our Frederick representative, you know, at this point, they redistricted Twin Ridge Elementary. So any, any children that would be in any of these new residential slash commercial areas would be more than likely, uh, attending Twin Ridge. That's an issue. There would be more children that would need more sports facilities and more park fields. Um, you know, for sports activities. That's an issue. So this addresses that and I feel it's a fair compromise. There are smaller properties where they just can't meet at APFO, um, uh, for open space. So I, I think that we're, we're compromising and I think we're compromising and everybody will benefit from it. So I'm in, um, approval of ordinance number 2019 dash 12.
Does anyone?
Yeah. Just a couple of quick questions and then comments. Um, the 15,000, uh, square foot, um, where, where did that general number come from? Did you, um, look at other properties around downtown, downtown and compare that?
Yeah. Uh, some examples, I, I don't know if you've seen this or not, Jason. It's a, uh, document that basically has all the downtown properties, uh, listed on it. And, uh, you know, an argument could be made that it got drawn at 20,000 or 15,000. But there is a, a point, um, in the, uh, in the list of the properties where you definitely go into the larger properties that include things like, uh, uh, the, uh, the rail yard property, the bank building property, the, uh, um, Calvary United Methodist is, uh, is in that group as well. And, uh, and so is the M H W Realty, uh, property, which is over on the cold storage, the old cold storage area. So, uh, 15,000 was, uh, a breaking point that got us, uh, right to around a third of an acre. And, and that's why I picked it. Uh, if you want 20,000, uh, then you, you know, you're drawing the line at the half acre. You know, and, and that would not be the end of the world. But, you know, as I drafted, I thought 15,000 was a good number and I had, uh, uh, talked to the staff about it and they felt that was a good number as well.
So the 15,000 would be a viable measurement for the bank building and the rail yard that you had mentioned?
It's much smaller than the bank, bank building.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, you know, uh, let me just show you this. And you could see I've, I've got the 20,000 square foot line listed. And basically everything on that page that you're looking at is, uh, 15,000, uh, square feet or larger.
Okay. My other comments, uh, will be reflected around open space as well. And, um, previously serving on Parks and Recs and, um, I guess being an active member of many of the youth sports organizations around here and knowing that the lack of, uh, field access as well as the parks, um, they really do impact schedules and the children that are trying to utilize the services that, um, we can provide these children. And, um, I think not only, uh, referencing cold storage, but also moving forward, um, with Brittany Manor, um, and other type developments. Um, you know, who knows what's going to happen with Center Street and with our vision plan. But we certainly have to, to keep aspect and, and not pinpoint, um, or place blame on any one property. Development is, um, something that will occur, um, as long as there is a, a. Development is something that will occur as long as there is a, a process that follows. But to make sure that our town continues to be the town that many of us love so dearly, you know, we're going to be expecting Brittany Manor to come online. They're already starting to lay out the plots for that, and that's going to be back on Back Acre as well. So starting to look at other traffic patterns that will focus on the Carroll County side, not only impeding on the Frederick side as well. So, I mean, the council altogether needs to make sure that, as we are moving forward, that our APFO, our fields, our youth sports organizations and those types of things won't be completely burdened down, and the residents have to go elsewhere to look for services that we should be able to provide. So that's all I'm going to, I'll conclude with that, but I just wanted to, to figure out where 15,000 sort of came around and, and what we were looking for in moving forward with that. So, thank you.
So, Jason, just elaborate a little bit on the 15,000 square feet. The, the document that Larry had, if it's the same document, it's the one the Planning Commission requested from town staff, because through the discussion of 2019-12, we did toss around the idea of exempting smaller parcels within the downtown zone. We were throwing around numbers like 7,500 or 5,000 square feet, but when you looked at that list, it was so few properties. So I can, I can understand where the 15,000 kind of came from based on what is on that sheet. So I do like 2019-12, the third revision with the 15,000 feet. I think it does allow for infill development downtown, which is obviously what we want to promote, so I'm happy to see this.
Okay, thank you. So my final comment on this is that, you know, what's important to us at the council table, and what we've heard from the citizens, is that, you know, we do want these downtown properties developed. We're, we don't like driving past the bank building and seeing the broken windows and everything. It's, you know, and so we want to encourage development, but we want to encourage it in scale with the community. And I believe that, that what we've done here by, by allowing the smaller ones to, to be exempt from the APFO and, and providing a little bit of leniency toward those bigger properties, we feel that will keep us in scale with commercial to residential. If something is developed purely residential, then basically, they have to apply, tell me if I'm wrong, Barney, if it's purely residential and it's over 15,000 square feet, then they have to abide by the three acres per 100 new residents it would create. True statement. Okay? All right, so, so the only way to, to go at less than three acres per 100 new residents is to provide a commercial component. And again, that's what we're trying to do, to keep, keep a scale on it, so, so nothing looks overdeveloped or is indeed overdeveloped and impacting a community more than we would want it to if we lived on that street. Okay? All right, so with that, if nobody else has any more comments, we'll, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of 2019-12 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That was unanimous. Let's into my next can of worms, which is 2019-13.
So this also went to the Planning Commission on 12/20/2019, from the Planning Department, the recommendations for, from the Planning Commission on 11/25/2019, that doesn't match, related to ordinance 2019-13. Planning Commission did meet on this. Leslie Dickinson motioned it, motioned to not, not to recommend ordinance 2019-13, as written, and added to extinguish the special exception 2016-23. Judy Olenger seconded this motion. Planning Commission opened the most, this motion for discussion, for public comment. After discussion and public comments, vote was taken. Planning Commission took a vote on the ordinance 2019-13. All members of the Planning Commission member voted yes on the motion with the addition of the extinguishment of special exception 2016-23. And I can read off all the names if you need me to.
That's okay. So basically, what you're saying is the Planning Commission recommended that 2019-13 only repeal, repeal a text amendment that was done 2016-23. That was the, what the Planning Commission was recommendation.
Right, which is the red copy item, second one in the, yes, sir.
All right. So we were given two copies of this one. We're given the one as presented, and by the Planning Commission, and then we have one that is redlined, that basically dissolves 2016-23 to the best of its ability. So would someone like to make a motion on that?
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-13 with the following amendments. On page one of five, redline, strike out Article II entitled General Regulations, Section 112-7 entitled Off-Street Parking. Also strike out entitled Board of Appeals, Section 112-62 entitled Special Exceptions. Go down a little bit farther, the la, the last line of paragraph two, strike, and we're striking the language, "Add to permit purely residential projects only by a new special exception." Next strike is the third paragraph. Do I have to read all the paragraphs?
I would say just with the amendments.
Okay, that's fine. Go quicker. The following is, the following is, another amendment is to strike the fourth paragraph on page one of five. We're moving to page two of five. It strikes Section 1. It strikes Section 112-7, subsection, part B of that section. And on page three of five, it continues striking the remainder of subsection B of 112-7. The next amendment is, it looks like it changes, yeah, that's what I was getting at, it changes, renumbers Section 2 to Section 1. On page four of five, it basically strikes all of the wording, the amendment. And on page five of five, it strikes the remainder of that, which is number B.
I'll second whatever he just said.
Yeah.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. We'll go into discussion.
For the, I would like to say, for the people that are out there that confused with this, it is confusing, because I did it, but basically what this does is it removes the special exception that was allowed from ordinance 2016-23 that allowed purely residential development within the downtown zone that was off of Center and Prospect Streets. So this reapplies that, what was previously before that amendment, 26-2016-23, to all the downtown zone, which basically is commercial on the first floor and residential above in the downtown zone. Is that a fair assessment? Okay.
Okay. Anybody else got comments on that?
I would only say this, a couple of things. I, I've been open that I haven't supported 2019-13 since it was first introduced, probably not for the reasons that a lot of people would expect. I think we can all, my problem with this ordinance has always been that it's been sort of directed towards one piece of property, but when we sit up here, we need to be making decisions for the whole town, or in this case, the entire downtown zone. Another issue I have with it is that this particular property does have an active application for development, so I don't feel that at this time it would be a smart idea to even consider adopting something like this until that developer decides to move forward or to, to walk away. You know, we all agree that whatever the density is currently being offered is not suitable, and they don't currently meet the APFO standard, so unless they can meet the APFO standard, it can't go forward. So I, I cannot support this.
Fair.
Good. Anyone else? Okay. All right, I'll just make a comment. What this does is basically adds that commercial component to the downtown zone. That's where we were trying to go, and, and, you know, previously, before, I think, all of us were elected, it was, it was changed. So, you know, again, we want the downtown zone developed, but we want it developed to scale, and I think that Carl's amendment gets us there, because it mandates that commercial requirement in the downtown zone. Okay? So, so, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance as, as amended.
It also encourages commercial development downtown.
Yes.
That's something that we want to do.
Totally agree. So any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Four in favor and one opposed. And motion passes. All right, so now we're down to Resolution 2020-1, which is for the town to transfer property, and this, once again, we're on the Chick-fil-A, so. All right, and I just want to clarify a comment that was made during the public hearing. Our small chunk of property that is going to be deeded over to the Chick-fil-A is being done so for the amount of $25,000. So the town's actually selling the property in order to facilitate this and provide the added parking, and I believe they call it stacking of automobiles. So that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. So someone else like to make the Chick-fil-A motion to approve?
I'll, a motion for approval, Resolution 2020-1.
Okay. And is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Do you have a comment?
Was it, was the motion, with the exception of the small quarter that fronts on the South Main Street, that according to you, it talks with the developer?
Yeah, I can just give you a quick summary on that.
Okay.
When we talked with them, we said we'd want to reserve enough room that if we ever added a turn lane there, a sidewalk, grass strip, plenty of room for us to add in the future. They looked at 25 feet, so they just drew a line at 25 feet. After they drew out their plan, they find that they're, they have 13.9 feet between the curb and, and that, that line, and they really only need 10 feet as far as where the pavement is to the property line, so it makes sense for us to hang on to that extra 3.9 feet. That's all.
Okay. All right. I will still make my motion to approve Resolution 2020-1 with the recommended changes by town staff.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, still seconded. Discussion, anyone?
There was a concern mentioned by Mr. Fry regarding traffic flows, and that's been a concern with a lot of people in the neighborhood. Let's be very clear, the Chick-fil-A is wanted in this neighborhood. That being said, I think it's important for everybody to understand, it will have to go through a planning process. They are very strict about pedestrian flow, traffic flow, stacking of cars from their waiting and drive-through lanes, but let's say for some reason, and goodness, we don't want this, we want it to go through, it doesn't happen, Tom or council, is there any sense in making this contingent upon this going through Planning Commission and final approval? That would probably protect the, the person that's buying the property as well, because they don't want to buy it if they can't get this plan through. But it also gives us protections.
So after this resolution, I think the intention is that there'd be a contract, a purchase contract that would be drawn up and negotiated between the parties. So all this resolution does is authorize the transfer of the property. What would happen next is a negotiation of the contract. The contract could certainly, as negotiated, contain provisions of that sort. Indeed, if you look at the resolution as it's worded, talks about approval under the terms in the proposal attached here to as Exhibit B, or upon other commercially reasonable terms to be negotiated between the developer and the town attorney. And that's what we're referring to. This doesn't finalize a contract, doesn't finalize their development. You know, there'd have to be some additional terms, obviously, or negotiated terms, and that could be one of them if mutually agree.
Yeah, actually, that's probably a term that they don't want.
It could be.
Yeah, they're not going to want the land if they don't get approved.
All right, is there any more discussion? All in favor of Resolution 2020-1 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous in one year, if the stars keep aligning. We'll be able to go to Chick-fil-A here in Mount Airy, so. All right, on to ordinance 2020-3, budget amendment for annual road repaving, and this is only for introduction. And I would move to introduce that.
I'll second.
Okay, and I move seconded, and we'll see that again next month. Okay, next is the 2020-2, water and sewer capacity yield. This is for introduction and adoption. I'm happy to introduce 2020-2. Is there a second?
I'll second. I was waiting for somebody else.
Okay. Okay, all right. Let's see, it's introduced. Is there any discussion on that? Looking to the left.
Oh, no. Sorry, I'm thinking of something else I got to bring, bring up after.
That's okay.
In-between stuff here.
All right.
But no, nothing else.
All right. Okay. All those in favor of, of passing Resolution 2020-2, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Before we move on to unfinished business, I believe we have a new representative from Frederick County that walked in. Sorry, I can't remember your name, I know your face. You're the new county liaison for Jan Garden that took Roger Wilson's place, are you, are you not? You can come up to the podium and say who you are and introduce yourself.
Well, I appreciate that. So Joy Schaefer, I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy for the County Executive, the new Roger Wilson, who has big shoes to fill, both literally and figuratively. But I just, I'm here, I congratulate you on your incredible turnout. I was waiting in the hall for quite some time, so, and in your public comment, I think that's phenomenal participation. So I just wanted to introduce myself formally. I will pass out business cards later, but I am, I'm the liaison for you. I know the county executive wants towns to be successful, so please feel free to call on me. on me. I know you've got some stuff in front of the delegation as well. I work with them regularly, so I'm happy to assist in that way also.
Would you please, would you please give her our regards, and we appreciate what a great job she's done.
I certainly will, she'll appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, it's nice meeting you.
Larry, I have one more thing for unfinished, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So I just happen to be driving to Bank of America, and that property sort of stood out to me. And a few months ago, we sort of got some of the motions wheels greased up and having, they started to do some work, but I feel like it's sort of been postponed. Is this sort of in reference to what we're trying to do with the blight? Or anything?
Is that Seven Ridge Side?
We'll go with that.
Their permit expired on the 23rd.
Okay.
And so currently, they are without a permit. We've bounced around, and I sent something out today that technically their approval is null and void as well, and we could start all over, but we're not ready to go there yet. We're seeing what the county's going to do and require them to re-up their permit, but they have not applied yet. And I have a spreadsheet that I'd be glad to share with you all to show how this has been going on since 2014. And we need to get some movement on that, and we've made the county aware.
Have, so the town council, prior to this town council, granted some money to move a said telephone pole. Have we been at least reimbursed for that dollar amount?
That money has come back.
Thank you. No other comments?
All right, thank you, Jason. Okay, now we're down to new business. We got the, actually, the first item on there, Twin Arch Business Park Lot 19, we're going to move that to next month. Okay? And, because that was not in our packet, so we'll have it in our packets for next month. Next is the 4100 Twin Arch Road Public Works Agreement for Approval. And John, do you have a, can you give us some background on that?
This parcel is the one that's down below Century Ford. It's a, it had an abandoned house on it for a long time. It's very small, kind of an oddly shaped parcel. The house was demolished. A person did purchase it, and they went through the site plan approval process through the Planning Commission. And they're basically proposing a contractor's equipment storage yard. There won't be any type of structure on site, there'll be no water or sewer, it'll be utilized on the site, it'll just be an asphalt area supported by the stormwater management. Again, it was approved by the Planning Commission, and it's going to be a storage lot for excess vehicles that are purchased off-site and then resold via on-site or through the internet. And there are representatives for the owner here if you need to speak with them.
So this is next to Tractor Supply and across from Century Ford?
It's actually down below the stormwater management plan, right along Twin Arch Road.
Okay.
It's a very small, small triangular parcel.
You wouldn't even notice driving by, it looks like it's just unmoved piece of parcel. It's just south Century Drive, right before, I believe, the Mobile Home Park entrance and Aaron Drive.
Correct.
You would drive by without even noticing it.
Okay, thank you. And, let's see, I'll make a motion to approve this public works agreement for 4100 Twin Arch Road. Is there a second on that? Okay. All right, Councilwoman Washabaugh, seconds, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and that's passed unanimous.
It's right across from that pond?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, but, oh, like, it's below, it's even below that mode area. Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I know we just passed this, but where's the owner at?
The owner's not available, but his representative, Flackron.
Oh, do you mind, do you mind if I? Can you just, just very briefly, just explain the nature of your business? It was a little convoluted coming from my planner.
Sure thing. I'm the representative for the owner, Flackron Shabiu with American Cable Tech. So we will be purchasing and reselling vehicles, not vehicles, commercial vehicles, commercial equipment.
Flackron, is your mic on? Is there a green light there? It's really tough to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Will there be like a structure or fence securing your vehicles around the perimeter?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I just, okay. I don't have any, I just, I just wanted to know what exactly you were doing.
All right.
So just for commercial vehicles, I guess?
There'll be plants around the perimeter too.
Okay. Oh, very nice.
It'll look very nice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been brought to my attention that possibly I was the only one who did not get a Twin Arch Business Park Lot 19 Public Works Agreement. Did you guys have one?
I did.
I was, it was absent from mine, but I did contact them, and we were able to get it today.
Okay.
Mine was on the website.
Did you have time to review this?
That's 4100 Twin Arch. This one is Lot 19. Well, since, so four of us have it, and I'm the only one who missed out. True. Okay, all right. Would you guys like to move forward on that tonight?
I'm fine with it.
If you guys are ready, then someone can make a motion to approve.
No, thank you. I make a motion to approve the public works agreement for Lot 19 Twin Arch Business Park.
Okay, and is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Discussion, John, did you have anything to talk about on that?
Hang on, I thought Lot 19 got moved to March. We're talking about 4100, right?
I moved backwards because it became my understanding that I was the only one who didn't have it in my packet, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so I don't know, Ron Thompson was here earlier, I don't see him in the audience anymore. He's the engineer for that parcel. So that is the new location for Service Master, which currently houses inside the Dance Studio facility. So they are constructing a new building, and they'll be relocating to that new building. Did go through the Planning Commission and received all approvals from all county agencies and the town. So this is just to ratify that design and to move forward with that plan.
And in relation to the dance building, we're talking Center Stage?
Well, it's the one off of Backacre Circle.
Right.
It's at Center Stage.
I don't really know Lot 19, so.
Lot 19 is located over by Canyon Contracting, on that more of the industrial side.
Okay.
Away from the residential people.
Okay, so it'll fit within that?
Yeah. It was approved, I planned through. And it should be, most of the traffic from that facility would probably go through Aaron Lane now and not even go to Backacre Circle. Well, it will, but it'll go right instead of turning left and going down towards the residential. And again, it'll also free up additional parking spaces possibly at the Frank's Building.
That would be really awesome.
I thought it would be nice.
All right. Okay, let's see, we got the motion, it's been seconded, discussions occurred, and all those in favor, say aye.
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 And I will abstain because I have not read it. So, not sure what's in it. But with four people, that's enough to get this thing done. All right. Now we're down to Phase One Downtown Road Improvements from GMB Architects. And Barney, I believe you have the, we all got a little handout. And you can talk us through that if you don't mind.
Doesn't show up on my screen, so I have to turn around. Or I can look at my paper here. So very much what we had brought before, there were four options that we had brought to you previously, and this was basically taking Option Three that you had recommended, and we moved forward with a design from GMB as our consultant engineer that we have on retainer now. As you can see, at the top left, there's a, starts with a crosswalk, because we're widening Center Street at Main Street. Do you need me to point to it?
No.
Okay. Coming, approaching, so Center Street's at the top, Main Street's on the left side. So if you look at the top, you see three lanes. Two lanes are approaching Main Street, have a dedicated left and a dedicated right. You'll have a wider lane coming off of Main Street, northbound Main Street, onto eastbound Center Street. And that wider lane is so that you can help make that turn. That was a state highway requirement, that it'd be a minimum 16 feet wide. What we're looking at, again, we're concentrating more on Center Street, less on the other streets. To help define that eastbound lane, we're adding curbs at the intersections. We don't want to put it in front of the buildings because they tend to park, parallel park in front of the buildings. And you also have that parking area just behind the gun shack. So we didn't want to block that with any curb, so it'd just be a, you know, curb at the corner and just kind of help define that line. We would probably stripe that as well with a white line going up. And then as you come up, we try to keep that lane width pretty wide, so as you approach Cross Street, you can make that turn a little bit easier as well. So I know that was one of the issues. And then you'll see at the top of Cross Street there, that at Center Street, it's a hatched area. The idea is to make that more consistent slope, so that, again, you can go up there without scraping your cars on, especially the larger trucks. I know the fire company had issues with that. Again, this is kind of in preparation for Center Street going through. We definitely need the two lanes, dedicated lanes going towards Main Street. I know, yeah.
Just as you sort of make your way through, we're going to, just for clarification purposes for myself and everybody else, we're going to lose all of the head-in parking on Center Street that is across from or next to the Train Depot and along Center Street. Is that correct?
That's correct. All the angle parking would go away. We had previously put in extra paving, extra parking in the rail yard to help offset that originally. So that was the intent of that. Also, we gained public parking for around the train station that we now own. So the other thing about the angle parking was, it was very dangerous. A lot of them are very short spaces, and we had trucks that were almost out to the middle line of the road. So as cars came around, they had to go around them.
Right.
And then the other thing was, if you did have big trucks there and smaller cars trying to pull out, they're backing out into a road from the angle parking, so never a good situation.
Right. So by trying to encourage people to park in the rail yard with the new paving, has there been any talk about adding pedestrian signal at either this crosswalk or the one that is adjacent to the Train Depot as more pedestrians will be coming from into that sort of area?
We haven't talked about that, no.
Okay.
You'd have to ask the state, I believe, right?
It would have to go through state highway.
It's a good point. It's a very good point.
I mean, even just coming here.
Absolutely.
Myself, councilman, and another pedestrian were sitting there waiting, and without the signalization of a pedestrian crossing, it's like you almost have to take a step out to get the drivers to stop. And so by encouraging more pedestrians to go over there, you're now going to have, you know, that sort of worry about trying to cross Main Street or even then Center Street with more traffic. So I would just sort of put that on the, on the hind list.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, can you reach out to, I think they'll have to perform a study. And certainly things have changed that would warrant it. Can I ask a question, Barney, and it may not make any sense? And I know we're doing this for the future, we're planning ahead. Is this something that we need now, or until Center Street goes through, can we still have parallel parking in one of those lanes?
I'm sorry, still have parallel parking where the second lane is?
Yeah, until Center Street goes through. I mean, it's already a bottleneck now, so it might just make sense to do it, I don't know.
Well, part of this plan.
I've sat there many a time where I wish there was two lanes.
Part of this plan is to make Park Avenue one-way. And so everybody coming westbound towards Main Street on Park Avenue would get rerouted at Cross Street.
You have to pull your screen down.
And they would be coming down. Yeah. So I hadn't gotten there yet.
Okay, all right. There we go. So that's why, it does have to take effect immediately.
So you'll see at the bottom there, again, you see the arrows coming from Main Street going up Park Avenue. They would not stop. They would continue past Veterans, past Cross Street with no stop signs. Veterans Lane would be a one-way. It's really only wide enough for one lane right now, coming from Center Street towards Park Avenue. And then to make the loop, they could come back on Cross Street, but Cross Street would remain two-way. Anybody coming from Center Street on Cross Street to that Park Avenue, they would have to stop before they can make a left. They can't make a right at that point anymore. And then anybody coming westbound on Park Avenue, because of that turn, it's not the, it's not the best turn, if you would. The idea would be to stop them before they come in too fast and try to make that turn, and they're end up in the other lane. So the idea is to stop two ways of that three-way intersection.
Currently, there is no stop sign, though.
Currently, there's a stop sign coming down Cross.
But not going west on Park to make a right on Cross. There's no stop sign.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because most of the traffic would intend to go straight. But we're eliminating that.
Right.
Hey Barney, one question here. I might have missed it, but when Veterans connects back to Park, you have a no right turn sign there, but will there be a stop sign there also? Where Veterans connects back into Park?
I think the stop sign's already there.
Oh, there is.
So they showed as new.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think one of the good points to make, and it was councilman Hushower's point, was it's all reversible. So.
Yeah, as far as the one-way and stuff is all reversible, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't close Park, but it finally moves us into some direction to address the issue, and it's all reversible.
The only thing.
Except for going down Center Street, which we're going to have to do anyway, so.
Yeah. The only thing that we'd be adding on Park that we would just have to take back out if we had, wanted to reverse it, we recommend, it was recommended a curb go in on the south side, so that the match with the bump out on the north side of Park at Cross Street, so you can see this, where it says do not enter right there. The reason for that is to help discourage people coming down Park, not go straight through. They'll see two do not enter signs right there.
And it also maintains the parallel parking that one of the businesses was concerned about from the original plan. On both sides, so it'll actually increase it.
At the last meeting, they did not want that striped, they wanted to leave it open for deliveries, so we did not strike, we did not show a striping for parallel parking on the south side.
About that?
I think that's who brought it up.
That's who brought it up.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
So Barney, looking at this, even though we lose parking on center, it looks like we're picking it up there, right?
Alright, so are we moving to the middle now? That's... Alright, so this area in the red here next to Cross Street, we already have parking there, it's just turned the other direction. So we're not really losing spaces, but we're not gaining spaces. Those spaces used to, currently, they back out into, some of them back out into Cross Street.
Okay.
And since we're adding traffic there, we don't want to continue that, so the idea was to turn that.
And there's two-way traffic on that road right there, because the residents were concerned about the no left turn, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I ask a sequence question. I know the fire department was concerned about Cross Street where it meets up with Center Street. As sequence goes, are we going to fix that, that intersection there, ease the grade on it, so that it's suitable for the fire company prior to making Park Avenue one-way?
So, we're going to make it as best as we can. There's still going to be a slope there, we're just going to try to ease, because it goes up steep and then kind of levels off, we're going to try to make that much easier. But we can only go back so far because the entrance into the storage lot is not far away, so it's going to help, it's not going to make it perfect. We would definitely do that work, probably one of the first things. That way, they're not impacted by, you know, traffic coming that we're diverting from Park Avenue. We would definitely need to add, because we're putting more traffic here, I think we still need the two lanes coming down Center Street to Main Street, because now you have more traffic from Park.
But the fire department can still come up.
Of Park.
And then the fire company, they have said that their concern mostly was going from Main Street on the Park, because they can come back a different route, but that is their shortest route to get to, like, the senior homes and-
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. I was looking for Bruce, I guess he's live, but coming back-
No, he's just moved in the back, he was sleeping.
Oh, there he is.
He heard his name.
Ah, well, you're needed in the high rent district here.
In the box seats.
But Bruce, we're talking about when, if you get a call, say, to Wildwood, you'd be able to go up Park Avenue still, because it's going to be one-way. And I know that it might be a little bit more cumbersome for you to come down Cross Street, but as far as coming back, you could go out to 27 and down Watersville Road back to.
Yeah.
Right.
The rest is on issue with Park Avenue and the rest is now with the bigger trucks.
The angle.
Okay. Okay, now, is that being addressed?
Yeah, so what he's referring to is, because I go up Park Avenue many times myself, every day. If you stay to the left where the cars come down, the more you stay to the left, the easier it is. If you get too close to the right side, then your truck's going to turn and, like, towards the wall, so I think that's what's the concern more.
If you want to close it, you don't want to remediate it, because it may be.
Right, so that was being really left for whatever happens to that site in the future, which may or may not be in the near future. But in the meantime, we could always put something there to show that, you know, people are supposed to go up, you know, closer to the left side, so it's easier.
If a fire truck comes through with blaring lights, I pretty much think they got the right way, so.
Thanks, Bruce.
Anything else, or?
No.
No. Alright, well, that was all for informational purposes. It looks like we're moving forward on that, so that sounds good. Alright, next we're down to the valve replacement project for the Nottingham area, and this is to award the bid. And Barney, do you want to speak, or Brian, I saw Brian back there? Yep. So who wants to speak to this?
Let Brian speak.
Did you say make Brian speak?
It must be over two seconds.
It's done. It'll be short and sweet. Ongoing issue that we have out of Nottingham with the valve replacement bolts. We have multiple counties surrounding us that are taking on this problem. So far, we've had six blowout in that neighborhood, so we got to address the problem.
Yeah, I think we didn't opt for the better bolts at the time, and nobody did, and now there's a lot of people that are, we went back to the manufacturer, Mueller, and there's no recourse there, no class action suit, we got to either bite the bullet and replace them.
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions for Brian?
I'm not sure if I need to direct the questions to Brian or Barney.
Or anyone.
I'll start with, I'll start with Brian. The only thing that I found was a couple things, but the quote was from 2019. Do we have something saying from the Mid-Atlantic Utilities that the money, that the quote is still-
Yes, it's still good.
But do we have something in writing?
Yes, he emailed me back Tuesday and said it was good.
Alright, that's fine, just want to make sure we don't see any unexpected consequences or pricing, but, okay, cool.
Okay, anyone else? Nope, okay, let's see. Sir, a motion to approve the valve replacement in Nottingham for the cost of a price of $216,930.
To approve that the town council accepts the bid for Mid-Atlantic Utilities for the total bid price of $216,930 for the bolt replacement project over to Nottingham.
Second.
Alright, Jason has seconded, and is there any more discussion on this?
After the awarding of the bid, timeframe?
It will be done by July, or June 1.
Done before then?
Yes.
Okay. And then my only, my only other, just letting the residents know, is if we can get some signs and just say, hey, this is kind of going on, but I will, I've already let them know that this project was moving forward.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are worried about, like, when.
Yeah. What I plan on doing is I'll get ahold of Mid-Atlantic tomorrow, find out exactly when they're going to start, and I'm going to lay out a map to send to the Nottingham residents, or at least post it on our website, to give them an idea of the way that the Army is going to travel through that neighborhood replacing valves. As of right now, and I don't want to give any misinformation, but there should be no water loss to any resident out there while this is transpiring. The problem is, we don't know until we start digging. If we remove the dirt and the roadbed off of it, the bolts could blow out. Then it would be an emergency shutdown. It is a relatively straightforward fix. It takes us about a half an hour once we get there and fix them. So it's a quick fix, it's just, we're not planning on turning anybody's water off at this time.
Okay.
But that will be explained in the paperwork when I send it out.
When you post that, just CC me, and then I can post it to social media on our Nottingham Facebook page.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Brian. All in favor of approving that expenditure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, that was unanimous. We are down to the mayor and council reports, and we'll start with Mayor Rockenberg.
Thank you, Larry. So on behalf of the town council, myself, we hope everybody's New Year's off to a great start. We want to pause and reflect on the past decade, the challenges, the triumphs, the wisdom that we've all learned. We hope this was a catalyst for a better tomorrow, so thank you all. I personally would like to reflect on the past year, decade, and I'm both humbled and inspired by life's teachings and the power of friendship, family, and community that we all had. So thank you to those who graciously give of your time to be part of the process, many of you in this room today, and for making a difference in the quality of life of our community. I'm proud of our many accomplishments that we have done together and look forward to what 2020 holds in store for our town. You've heard about the survey, you're going to keep hearing about the survey, we are going to go up on the new billboards, I just sent you an email, so. We have to share with Basket Bingo, though. They actually had pushed us, but I was able to negotiate. So take the survey, it's very easy, takes a few minutes, don't procrastinate, let's get it in. We've already got a 10%, we want to beat my old response of 43%, so let's beat that one. Events in town, if you look on my report, go on the website, you'll see a link that Gina's done a fantastic job in linking all our events, so go look at that. And I think the big one coming up is the Chocolate Crawl on February 14th downtown, Friday, February 14th. Hope I didn't steal anybody's thunder there, I may have. Larry, I'm going to leave the Basket Bingo for you. Winter weather, it's not over yet, I think the groundhog did not see a shadow, but we still could get it. So you all are responsible for clearing your sidewalks within 24 hours, and certainly if it's icy or dangerous, those rules are meant to be flexible, but do your best to keep them clear. We'd also appreciate if you chip in and clean out the bus stops, clear around the fire hydrants as much as you can, that'll help our first responders get to a home that's on fire that could be yours, that would be very helpful. Also, this time of the year with New Year's resolutions, you'll see a lot of people running and on our town streets. We'd like to remind the runners out there to please be safe, wear something reflective, wear a flashing light, and we'd like to remind our people, our drivers, to please be careful, because there is an increase in runners out there. We are getting ready to go into our budget process, and I'm not going to read the whole process, it is in my mayor's report, but basically it goes to the town commissions, it comes back to the mayor, the mayor reviews it, he gives it to the town council, the town council makes the final decision, gives it back to the mayor for implementation. We're very excited to be doing the If I Were Mayor contest, we tried to get a couple councilmen to go. Larry, you've been with me one year, haven't you?
Uh, yeah, last year.
One it hasn't been this year, I'm going to double up, because you have a daughter in the school, and you have the youth task force. You're next, don't you worry, you're coming. So, and Gina, what day are we going? It's next week, it's February 10th. We are going to both Carroll and Frederick Counties to do the If I Were Mayor contest. And this year's contest is pretty cool, usually they have a theme, this theme is really open-ended, it says "If I Were Mayor, I Would." That's going to be a tough one.
Okay.
It's kind of cool. Volunteer opportunities exist, I want to thank Colleen, she actually, instead of just saying they exist and people guessing, we actually put a list. We have two openings on sanitation and recycling, we have two openings on water and sewer, and we have two openings on beautification. So all the other commissions are full, and we're very thankful for that, hence my lead-in to all these great volunteers. But things change, people move on, people get tired, so if you're interested in those other commissions, you can still be in queue. The mayor's community forum will be held Saturday, February 15th. I did not give a place for the mayor's forum, so it'll be right here at Town Hall from 11 to 12. That concludes my mayor's report, that will be posted, thank you. And for commission appointment recommendations, I am recommending to the town council that former councilman Peter Hill, council president, be appointed to the Board of Appeals, he brings a great wealth of information, I'm very excited that he's willing to return and serve. And I'd also like to recommend Mary Beth Obrensky for the Streets and Roads Commission.
I got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Coral seconds, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, they're in. Okay, beautification, parks and rec, council member Munder.
Alright, the meeting was held on Tuesday, January 21st. It was a very late agenda, we, just happy to report that the 125th Christmas anniversary ornament, the town did one, we sold almost all of them, we have less than 10 left.
We had four.
Four left, I wasn't going to say that, that, Larry, but we sold all but four of the ornaments, which was an excellent turnout for purchasing those ornaments this year, so thank you to all who bought those. They went over the parks, the various status of the parks around town, which basically it's wintertime, so they're just coming along, waiting for spring to continue on doing their wonderful work. We discussed the budget, they are considering this year for Flag Day and 4th of July. If you've noticed that during Christmas time, they have put garland up along the fence at Wildwood Park, along Park Avenue. This year, they're going to decide or try to put up some type of flag-related or patriotic-related banners on Flag Day and the 4th of July along that fence line. They also are talking about and considering planting native trees at Watkins Park around the dog park to provide further shade on them. And that's it for the beautification commission, the next meeting is February 17th. They are always held on the third Tuesday of the month at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. And we want to the parks and recreation agenda, basically, we had two scout-related projects presented to the commission. Girl Scout Troop 81020 came before, came before the board to present their bronze award plan, which will be basically anti-smoking signs put up at the entrance to the various parks around town to remind people that currently the parks are a no-smoking area. They were focused on Watkins Prospect and Wildwood, and the signs will say "No Smoking, Leave No Trace, Make the World a Better Place." So we thought, it goes along with the motto, and it will improve the air quality and ground pollution. So currently, we're just waiting for a proof to be sent to Gina, and we will move on from there. Sam Johnson with Boy Scout Troop 460 presented his Eagle Scout project, and he will be building a matching dugout at the field at Watkins Park, starting sometime this spring or early summer, depending on the game schedule over there. And we also discussed the 2021 budget, and that is about it for Parks and Recs. The next meeting will be February 20th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
Alright, thank you so much. Okay, Economic Development Planning Commission, council member Reed.
EDC met on Monday, January 22nd. They have been working on a new grant called Building a Brighter Future for Small Businesses. We expect the draft grant to be introduced at our next meeting. The Second Annual Envision Mount Airy Tour is scheduled for June 11th. The commission accepted volunteers to sit on the planning committee, so hopefully we'll put Gina and her crew back to work pretty soon to make that another successful year. The farmer's market starts every Wednesday, May 13 through September 30th, and Hometown Chili Cook Off and Custom Car Show is Saturday, June 20th. EDC will meet again on Wednesday, February 26th. The Planning Commission met on Monday, January 27th. Ordinance 2020-1 was introduced to planning. It's a proposed amendment to the town code creating a new section entitled Mixed Use Development. Planning set a public hearing for 2021 on Thursday, February 6, 6:00 PM at Town Hall. I believe planning decided that that would be a closed discussion until the very end, correct, Tom?
So.
Yeah, so public comment will be received after the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to go through it and discuss it amongst themselves. Ordinance 2022, a proposed zoning text amendment to allow a restaurant/ lunchroom in the I Industrial District in the Twin Arch Industrial Park. The Planning Commission voted in favor of the amendment, sending it back to town council in March. The Planning Commission meets again on Monday, February 24th. Junior Task Force meets on Monday, February 17th, 5:00 PM at Town Hall. They are actually working with Sherry Cates at State Farm, or will be working with Sherry Cates at State Farm, hopefully, on an American Red Cross blood drive. Before a date can be selected for that blood drive, we need about 40 people to show interest. So if you're interested in donating blood potentially in the spring, shoot me an email, and I can put your name on the list. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I may have misheard you. February 6 is a workshop on-
Very short, yeah, for the mixed-use development.
Did you say it's 6 o'clock, it's 6, did you say it's 10?
6 o'clock.
Okay, I was reading this, okay, thank you.
And will that be taped?
Will be taped, and I'm going to reach out to CNC and see if we can get it actually broadcast soon after.
Okay.
Because I'm fixing that.
Okay.
But it's closed, right?
No, it's an open meeting, which, what I think Councilwoman Reed was saying is, comments from the public would come at the end of the discussion among the-
Okay, alright. Okay, down to sanitation, recycling, and Mount Airy Sustainable Commission, council member Poreya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. At our last commission meeting for recycling and sanitation, we were able to schedule a, the paper shredding and battery event, which will be on June 6th at Watkins Park. And we will have signage and further notification about as that date gets closer. We're looking at getting some banners and then also using the town signs for publication for that. We're still working on a date for the bulk pickup, so as soon as we figure out a date for that, we will publicize that as well. We got some interesting news at that meeting. J&amp;J is looking to move their operations to Mount Airy, which is a very exciting, exciting news, and we look forward them, look forward to them joining Mount Airy. I wanted to recognize the Trash Mob, who recently on, on June 25th, I believe, went over to the park and ride and did a cleanup. This is just a, a volunteer group that just randomly heads out to places. And as I drive up and down 70 and going into Howard County, it, it just amazes me how much actual trash and litter is, is out on our roadways when it doesn't get picked up. And here we have this volunteer group that just kind of takes, takes it upon themselves to go out and just clean up areas, and, and it's such an amazing thing. So follow them on Facebook, Mount Airy Trash Mob. They will post a date, a time, a location, and if you can just give one or two hours. I feel like many of the council members up here have been out there, and I knew the Junior Task Force also met with Trash Mob as well. It's a, it's a wonderful volunteer group that just keeps our town looking as beautiful as it does and makes us appreciate Mount Airy a little bit more. My next meeting is February 19th for the Sustainable Mount Airy Commission at 7:00 PM, and they will be having an alternate location somewhere in this building, since that is our public hearing for Voslo. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Streets and Roads Commission, council member Washaba.
Yes, we had a meeting on Wednesday, January 29th, which was rescheduled from our original meeting on January 7th. We were one of the few people that were affected by about like the one or two days that we've actually had snow. The main topic of discussion was the Back Acre Circle parking issue. As mentioned previously, the mayor made the decision in December to implement no parking, standing, or stopping signs in front of the dance studio located on Back Acre Circle. The patrons and the dance studio owners, as well as the landlord Frank Dirfsbaugh spoke, and sent online submittal forms to date. We have a total of 31 online submittal forms for that particular issue. So as you can see, it's been a very hot topic. And there's, they want us to support rescinding the decision. That would be the patrons and the dance studio owners, as well as the landlord, where the dance studio owners reside. The town staff did review restriping the road in front of the studio, however, the cost is $10,000. After a discussion, Mayor Patis suggested reviewing the possibility of a back entrance again, and the mayor and I, as well as the town staff, would be happy to meet with the owners and the landlord to review that solution. Jennifer Smith updated the Town of Mount Airy Temporary On Street Parking Request Form. These forms must be completed and submitted to the Town of Mount Airy Streets and Road Commission a minimum of three months prior to the requested start date. We also discussed the crosswalks that are located on Loxley Lane and Kings Forest Trail in Nottingham subdivision. Crosswalks will be striped at the stop signs. Right now, there's a crosswalk, it's like the crosswalk to nowhere, and it doesn't have a stop sign. So that will be going away. We'll have two cross, crosswalks which will have stop signs, and that's where the buses will stop. So that will be a much safer environment for that neighborhood. Extended South Main Street, we've had issues with that. We will be seeing some improvements this spring. The town staff will be installing some, some barriers. Actually, it will look like a little island. It will sort of give people the impression that they should be going around the curve as opposed to straight down Extended South Main Street. And also, they'll restripe that, so that will also help with the visual as drivers are making that loop around. So hopefully, people won't keep going down South Main Street, Extended South Main Street, to try to get an 970 because there is no access. Okay. Then we have the Fairwood and Main intersection. That was, a resident had brought to our attention that the site distance was affected in mornings due to the bus stop, the pole, and the new mailboxes that had been installed. Visual studies were done by the town staff. The pole cannot be moved, so that has to stay where it is. The mailbox did not impede the driver's vision. However, the students standing at the bus stop did. However, the Frederick County Public School System Transportation Department was contacted, and the bus stop is actually further down the street, but the kids like to stand right at the corner, so that's causing the issue. We didn't really, we took it off the list, but as I was putting this on my report today, I thought maybe somehow we can try to get with the Frederick County Transportation Department again and just ask that the bus driver maybe actually stop where the bus stop should be, and then maybe the children or the students will follow and, you know, correct that. I mean, I know they, it's more convenient for them just to go to the, to the intersection, but I think just in, for safety purposes, it might be better just to revisit that one little time, okay? Also, Barney was very, very gracious. He came to our meeting and he went over option three, which we have reviewed in its entirety tonight. We really appreciated that. It was just an FYI, so that I, I'd like to make sure that everybody on the Streets and Roads Commission is aware of what's happening with our streets. And lastly, nominations were presented for a new chairperson for the upcoming year. Lynn Galetti was nominated and voted unanimously that she would succeed Jennifer Smith, who resigned from our commission very sadly after seven years. She did an outstanding job. And the next meeting, we will also be nominating and voting for the position of secretary, and that meeting will take place on March 3rd at 7:00 in Town Hall. And that completes my report.
All right, thank you, Patty. Next is Water Security and Sewer Commission and Special Projects, that's myself. Our next Water and Sewer Commission meeting is this Wednesday at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall, that's February 5th. And we haven't met for the last couple of months, so there's really nothing to report unless Dick would like to say something. You good? Okay. All right, as far as Special Projects goes, Historical Society, I'm not going to give it away, but the Hall of Fame inductees for this year have been picked, but I'm going to wait and let the president of the Historical Society come and announce that on March, at the March council meeting. However, that puts it kind of tight because the Hall of Fame Dinner is on March 17th. So if you would like tickets for the March 17th Hall of Fame Dinner, then you can go to the Blossom and Basket Boutique, and you can buy your, your tickets there for the Hall of Fame Dinner. It'll be held March 17th at the American Legion. Okay, the Bingo is coming up for the Historical Society. That is on February 22nd, and just so happens the chairman's here. Would you like to give a shameless plug?
Sure.
Okay.
Hello? Yes, our Boxes and Bag Bingo is February 22nd at the Volunteer Fireman Reception Hall. We have 20 games, 20 regular games, four special games, four raffles, 50/50. We've had a tremendous turnout from our sponsors, from our local businesses, from private citizens. So it's going to be a wonderful event. Please, you know, get your tickets, you can get them on Facebook, online, or at the museum, which is open 12 to 4. And if you haven't been to the museum, you got to get into the museum. We have, our train layout is growing, and we have some new displays, so don't miss out on that. So I'll see you all at the Bingo, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. So, yeah, Bingo's a lot of fun, brings in quite a bit of money for the Historical Societies. It goes into the displays at the museum, so a pretty impressive. Good news on the caboose, we finally got that rear entry onto the caboose that allows us to send people through the front end of the caboose and out the back end. Now the question is, what's the front and what's the back? We don't know. So, but anyway, that should make it, you know, a lot easier during the heavy traffics of the Chili Cookoff and, and Oktoberfest, things like that. We're going to be able to get people in and out of the caboose relatively quickly, so that's a good thing. There is a Southwest Airlines raffle, that's two round-trip tickets on Southwest Airlines. Tickets, the raffle tickets only cost you $10 apiece, they're on sale in Town Hall, at the Blossom and Basket Boutique, and at the museum. So, so, and they'll also be available for sale at the Bingo. Only 300 tickets will be sold, and usually we only sell about 200. So your chances of winning are 1 in 200, that's pretty good, okay? For two round-trip tickets. Domestic only, you're not going to Hawaii on these. Okay, so that's going on with that, and I think that's it. So with that, we go to the Town Administrator Report. What do you got going on, David?
Well, we sent out the progress reports for all our projects to the mayor and council. If anyone has any questions, feel free, we'll try to answer them. One thing is, we submitted a Public Arts in Public Places request, a grant. This is a $2,500, 100% grant from the state, and we've been working with the Mount Airy Arts Alliance to try to get that done. What that would do is give them some funding to do some, a vision plan, another vision plan. But it's a vision plan about art in public places. And hopefully, we can get that grant, get that idea going, get some input from the community, get approval from the council. And then there's another grant after that, after we've decided what art we want and where we want it, that we can go after to try to encourage the artists to put some public art. The only other thing I would report is that we had testimony in front of the Frederick County delegation for our urban renewal litigation, legislation, and that went fairly well. The Carroll County delegation has endorsed us and encouraged Frederick County delegation, so we have to work both sides of the street, so to speak. And hopefully, that gets taken care of this Friday, and then the bill would actually get submitted and then go through the legislature.
All right, thank you. All right, Town Attorney Report, Tom McCurn.
Attended the January Planning Commission, at which the priorities resolution of the Planning Commission was before it, as well as initial discussion of the MXD ordinance and the text amendment concerning restaurants in the industrial district. Attended a meeting with the, among members, representatives of the MDE, town staff, Councilman Munder as well, as well as IDA and its council concerning Harrison LaSheer. I did follow up, and we'll talk about later, I guess, CSX and the regular property issues, and prepared the two PWAs on the agenda, as well as the ordinances on the agenda tonight. Finally, as was mentioned by somebody earlier, on February 19th, I believe, starting at 7:00 PM, is the hearing on the Voslo Properties' application for rezoning. That is a sort of different proceeding than a legislative one. It's what we call a quasi-judicial proceeding, and so you all will be sitting kind of like judges. And I will have a legal memorandum to all of you in the coming days that outlines the nature of that proceeding, those issues that are on the table for you all to decide, and the manner in which you all sit and proceed in that type of proceeding, because it is a little bit different.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And Voslo is at 7:00 PM?
Isn't, I think it's at 7:00 PM on February 19th.
Okay. Okay, we have a copy of the Code Enforcer Report. And at this point, we will go into a possible closed meeting. Statutory, statutory authority to a closed session, general provisions article is allowed by 13305B3 to consider the acquisition of rural property for public purpose in matters directly related. There are two subject, Riggler, CSX, possible location for the new police station, and downtown parking. And I would move that, following that closed meeting, the town council meeting is officially adjourned. Is there a second on that?
All second.
Okay, and roll call, council member Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Boria, I'm an aye.
Aye.
Washaba?
Aye.
And Munder, okay. All right, with that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.